Like to call to order Spokane City Council meeting for August 17. Ms. Pfister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
So I have a brief proclamation to read this evening on behalf of the mayor for National Rural Letter Carrier Week. Whereas the National Rural Letter Carriers Association would have held its 116th national convention in Spokane, Washington on August 18 through 21, 2020, and whereas nationwide rural letter carriers are employees of the United States Postal Service designated to deliver mail to the less populated areas of the United States. In 1903, the National Rural Letter Carriers Association was organized to not only better address the needs of citizens in rural areas, but also meet the needs of rural letter carriers. And whereas it is fitting to recognize the accomplishments of rural letter carriers of the National Rural Letter Carriers Association. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim August 18 through 21, 2020 as National Rural Letter Carrier Week in Spokane, and urge citizens to join with me to pay tribute to the National Rural Letter Carriers Association. So, sorry that they could not join us this time, and it's perhaps not a coincidence this is the week everyone's focused on letter carriers. So with that, let's turn to our legislative agenda.
Special Budget Ordinances, Ordinance C-35923, Amending Ordinance Number C-35857, passed by the City Council December 16, 2019, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2020, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2020, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage in Declaring an Emergency and Appropriating Funds in..." Or excuse me, "Human Services Grant Funds from Commerce COVID ESG Contractual Services, $272,217 to Commerce COVID ESG Various Accounts, Same Amount. This action provides funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance, and to support additional homeless assistance and homelessness prevention activities to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19."
There's no public testimony signed up for this. Are there any council questions or comments? Not seeing any. Take a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council President isn't aye. Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Earlier today in our briefing session, we suspended the rules and added a special budget ordinance to help fund our COVID Community Response Awards that are coming up later. Because it's recently added, Madam Clerk, you of course will have to read the whole thing. So, thanks.
Ordinance Number C-35929, and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number C-35857, passed by the City Council December 16, 2019, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2020, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2020, Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage in Declaring an Emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2020 Budget Ordinance Number C-35857 as above entitled, and which passed the City Council December 16, 2019, it is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the General Fund, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time of making such budget ordinance. Now therefore, the City of Spokane does ordain Section 1 that in the budget of the General Fund and the budget annexed thereto with reference to the General Fund, the following changes be made: From Department of Commerce, $2,902,815 to General Fund Contractual Services, Section 2, it is therefore by the City Council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth herein, such urgency and emergency arising from the need to budget for the city's necessary responses, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Spokane, and to mitigate the public health, social health, and economic impacts of COVID-19 in Spokane, and because of such need and urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance, and also because the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect to be enforced immediately upon its passage."
Right, for those of you watching, essentially this is money that Congress appropriated to the states under the CARES Act to respond to COVID-19. Because Spokane County is a county over 500,000, they received $90 million to distribute to the community. But the state of Washington gave the City of Spokane approximately $6.6 million in allocations to spend, and this is really the first round of spending that we've attempted. Again, there's no public testimony that anyone's requested. Are there any questions or comments from council members? All right, seeing none, another roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
And we also placed on our legislative agenda six contracts to allocate that same amount of money to community responses, and calling that Special Consideration 1, I believe. And go ahead and read that.
S1, Contracts for COVID-19 Assistance and Mitigation with A. Family Promise of Spokane, $20,000; B. Catholic Charities of Spokane, $500,000; C. Spokane Arts, $300,000; D. Giaco, $1,039,100; E. Spokane Workforce, $822,000; F. Community-Minded Enterprises, $221,715. This is under CARES Act funding.
And again, this round of funding, we put out requests for proposals and asked responding parties to tell us how they would distribute money to other entities. So all those various entities are distributing it to small businesses, to organizations, childcare, and landlord tenant, essentially is a summary of it. Again, there's no public testimony on that. Any questions or comments? I wanted to recognize Councilmember Stratton and Councilmember Wilkerson, who sat on the committee with the mayor, myself, and Chief Financial Officer Tanya Wallace to go through the applications and make a preliminary award of those monies, and Sally Stouffer from the administration, whose office negotiated with the specific entities. But any questions or comments? All right, not seeing any, we have another roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Great, that is unanimous. Next up.
Resolution 2020-54, Establishing Guiding Principles for the City of Spokane's Role in the Criminal Justice System in Spokane County.
Again, we published, I believe, seven guiding principles that were developed by the Justice Task Force that the county commissioners convened to help us understand how best to work with the county jail system and the criminal justice system, and it included law enforcement, prosecutors, judges, public defenders, social workers, foundations, community members, people of an interest, and these were approved by them with, most of them unanimously, and the rest of them were about 28 out of 30, to provide guidance. And the county commissioners are considering them, and the City Council, by adopting this resolution, would adopt it as the policy of the City of Spokane. Again, I don't believe we have any public testimony signed up for now. We've seen some emails about it. But any other commentary or questions from council members?
Council President.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I had a number of questions regarding the resolution, and thankfully I've had the opportunity to get lots of feedback. Today, in fact, I spoke with both the District Court Judge and Superior Court Judge to get their insights and interpretations. And I know, I think in our committee meeting, I had a lot of questions regarding the racial equity piece, and I think I've had a lot of my questions answered on that. Really, it kind of boils down to eliminating bias and trying to prevent disparity in how we treat everybody in the system. My concern, however, remains with the second bullet point regarding least restrictive conditions. And after thinking about this a lot and asking a lot of questions from some folks, my concern is that we're limiting this to strictly just their willingness or ability to appear, and we're not considering, I think, other elements that are really important, I think, for the judicial system to consider, such as whether or not there's a likelihood that they'll interfere in the administration of justice or the likelihood to commit a violent crime. And under the interference of the administration of justice, that includes things like ignoring an order by the court, such things as perhaps committing a crime while they're on pretrial release, or interfering with witnesses or victims. And so I really think that those have to be a consideration for a judge in terms of whether or not to set bail at a higher level or to release on their own recognizance. I do think bail reform is important, and we have to have, I think, a broader discussion. But I'm going to vote no on the resolution today. But I do know that this section is going to come back to us because there's one that's almost identical to it that's in our list of more controversial reforms in our law enforcement reform resolution. And so I'm sure this will come back, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss further. But as of today, that's kind of where I'm at. So I'll leave it there.
Thanks. Other comments, questions?
Councilmember Beggs.
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson.
I will be supporting this. You know, we've talked about equity in many aspects of our community, our health, our community. It seems only reasonable and prudent that we look at the equity lens in our criminal justice system. There are some challenges into Councilmember Cathcart. Those things, I hope, are already being considered for the least restrictive alternative, and just look back with a different lens. If justice was truly blind, then some of the issues we're discussing at face in today wouldn't be existing. So hoping to take that into consideration there.
Thank you. Other questions and comments?
Real quick.
Yes, Councilmember Mum.
I'm going to support this on the whole. These are guiding principles. This is not a source of least restrictive ordinance, and we have no jurisdiction over budgets and that part of it. So I'm going to take it on the whole, that this is the right way forward. So I know you've worked hard with the administration getting to this. And there was a news conference held with the mayor. I support things that we agreed on. So in support of the administration and the council moving forward, I'm happy to support.
Thanks. Other comments, questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any, and I'm obviously going to support it, and I just address Councilmember Cathcart's concerns. Those, one of the reasons I supported keeping all the language the same is that the community group and the task force, which met in large groups several times, and in the smaller groups on a weekly basis, they crafted that language as a consensus language. So I agree that we could put in a couple more words there to be a little more precise on it, but I'd rather go with what the community will on that was. But on that particular pretrial release issue, I was part of the discussions on that, and they were assuming when it says to assure appearance, that means assure appearance in compliance with the release orders. But I agree that when we get another touch at it, and it's our language, we can make that clear as well. The challenge, when I talk to most judges, is that they're given a choice of either releasing the person with absolutely no supervision, or leaving them in jail at risk of losing their job, and their housing, and their kids, and the taxpayers paying for their medical, and they just need intermediate options. And this really is giving supervision and other options that can keep the community safe, rehabilitate them, and keep things going well until they actually are, meet the decision maker of did they commit a crime or not. This is for pretrial, so they're presumed innocent at that. But I take your comments, I appreciate them, and also appreciate that you reached out to judges and other people and educated yourself on that. I think it's a great day for Spokane to continue to lead the way on reforming our criminal justice in a way that saves money, reduces crime, increases equity, and reclaims lives. And so I'll be voting for it as well. Roll call, Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes 6 to 1. That brings us to our next matter.
Resolution 2020-55, Setting Hearing Before City Council for September 14, 2020, for the Vacation of Various Right-Aways south of East North Foothills Drive and west of Perry Street, as requested by the Spokane School District to accommodate the Northeast Middle School.
And Eldon Brown, do you just want to tee this up for us?
Yeah, we received this application earlier this year. They're stuck with purchase and sale agreement. And the school there, he was really just trying to consolidate property over to, they're being near the East Middle School. So as part of that, as I mentioned earlier in our briefing, it was a, intended to be a no-cost vacation, and if they satisfy the purchase and sale agreement. And so at this point in time, we're just looking at what he's supposed to be retained from very few utility providers, but whatever else goes, they're just trying to consolidate a full parcel near for that new school. So I'd be happy to answer any questions to them.
All right, thank you, Eldon. And nobody signed up to testify for that? Are there any more questions from council or comments? Setting the hearing on this for September 14. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, passes 7 to 0, and the next matter, very similar.
Resolution 2020-56, Setting Hearing Before City Council for September 21, 2020, for the Vacation of the north half of Rosewood Avenue, between the east line of Helena Street and 25 feet east of the west line of Lot 17, Block 27 of the Plot of Guns Edition, as requested by John and Nicole Whipple.
Eldon, you want to give us the same kind of intro on that one?
I can pull up the map here too, if you want to see it. Anyway, what's going on with this? It's another piece of right-of-way up there in the northeast part of town. Rosewood Avenue is actually 60 feet wide. We're looking at just vacate the north half of Rosewood, just east of Helena Street. It's about a 225-foot distance. This was dedicated back in the plat, back in 1889, I think. And so it's part of the non-user statute we had back then. Property owners in the north side are just requesting that vacation, which we do at no cost using that non-user statute. And an interesting thing that has come up in regard to these non-user statutes is if you have any other utility providers that have any easements in there. And I think how we intend to handle that, once the city releases our interest in the right-of-way, is having the owners actually turn around and dedicate any easements that have been existing that people kind of relied on over time to put in there when we thought it was a right-of-way, more or less. Anyway, that's what's going on with that project. The people are just trying to consolidate it for, basically for liability purposes. There's been stuff going on in there that they really like to have their control over. So if you have any questions on that one, too.
No public comment requested. Any questions from council? All right, we'll have another roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye.
Aye.
Yes, got you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes 7 to 0. Okay, one more for you, Eldon. Terry will announce it.
Okay. Resolution 2020-57, Setting Hearing Before City Council for September 21, 2020, for the Vacation of Grant Street between the north line of Fifth Avenue and the south line of I-90, as requested by Darren DeNee.
All right, Eldon.
Well, this is one little piece of Grand Avenue that's just on the south side of the freeway, from Fifth Avenue north to the freeway. And we didn't have any city utilities in that little piece of right-of-way. And we did reach out to the state, find out if they had any concerns with using that access to the freeway. They were fine with it. So basically, the property owners are just trying to consolidate that property for development purposes. That is a right-of-way we would vacate at cost for, as usually assesses valuation of the property. Now, that turned out to be, I think, a left of around $35,000. We do what we anticipate is part of the cost of that vacation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one.
All right, no requested public testimony. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll have another roll call. Councilmember Mum. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, again, 7 to 0, 0, and the next one.
Resolution 2020-58, Recognizing the Grand Boulevard Transportation and Land Use Study. Hereafter, the study as a declaration of the Comstock Neighborhood desired future conditions in the Grand District Center, providing direction for neighborhood-based improvement activities as well as neighborhood priorities involving future projects.
All right, we have Melissa Whitstruck from staff, who I believe is going to walk us through this.
I think you're still on mute, Melissa. All right, sorry about that. Thank you. So, good evening, and I'm going to try to present screen two. So let's see if you can see that.
Yes.
Okay, great. So the Grand Boulevard study is a joint effort between Integrated Capital Management and Neighborhood, well, Neighborhood and Planning Services. And we are ready to finalize this study. It started in 2019. Being able to advance this. This is the project area boundaries. There are two parts to this study, as I mentioned. The blue dotted outline that you see is the land use in the Alice's area, where we did a marketing study as well. Roughly 27th Avenue on the north to 39th Avenue, Latewall on the west to Arthur Street. And in the center of it is what you'll see with the black dotted outline is the traffic study area. The traffic study area is what was requested by, originally by the Comstock Neighborhood Council. It is the first traffic calming study that was done under the Traffic Calming Program. And then the land use area and marketing study was a request by the City Council to talk about or to understand what capacity is for future growth and development. As all of you know, Grand Boulevard is a key north-south arterial, something that we're kind of short on on the South Hill, and as a result, it is carrying a lot of traffic. It's changed quite a bit, which was part of the fuel for the Comstock Neighborhood Council's request. We did reach out to Rockwood Neighborhood Council and Manitowoc Cannon Hill as well, because they are also very interested in traffic calming in this area. So this is just a quick background on the study. I won't go through all of this, but we have an extensive public outreach list for you that's in your packets this evening, to open houses, an online survey, which got great response, as well as numerous other opportunities and outreach to the neighborhood councils themselves. These are basically the elements of the study, so that we understand the traffic patterns in 50 young Grand Boulevard, and looking at how we can make that a calmer and safer area for all users, and looking at the land use boundaries with comprehensive goals in mind. These are the critical concerns that came out of those meetings and our surveys, and it's very consistent across the whole study and all of our participants. Of course, there's always a few that would rather see things stay exactly as they are, and so we took that into account, too. These are some of the study goals that work with a comprehensive plan for land use transportation, also some of the connectivity and livability plan that the South Hill Coalition put together 2012, 2014. And we, these are the way that you'll see that expressed in the study document itself. The snapshot of the online survey was really interesting and well-done, I think, is evidenced by the number of responses that we got. And again, pretty consistent. We'd like to see more restaurants. We'd like to be able to bike. We'd like to be able to have more shopping, and we'd like to be able to cross more safely. Sidewalk improvements and street landscaping as well. Just a snapshot. This is my first go-around with word clouds on this project, and so it was a lot of fun, and it shows you, yes, people are very interested in that. Oops, sorry. to accommodate desirable development forms. You'll see here, this is centers and corridors zoning in the purple and this lighter pink or salmon color. And it's also centers and corridors zoning down here, which is pretty generous. The issue is a lack of vacant land necessarily for commercial development, but it is there. Again, the suggestion is that local policy is not a significant constraint to redevelopment. There are not really any incentives that apply in this area for commercial development or multifamily development due to the buildup of the residential, as well as the more affluent or higher incomes in the area. Incentives that could be offered are infrastructure development, can be a motivating signal. We've seen that in some of our other centers and corridors. And strive to increase that residential by gradually improving what is essentially a suburban auto-oriented development pattern. And I'm going to let Inga take over from here. She was, her Integrated Capital Management unit was very focused on the transportation piece of it.
Okay, so Melissa, I'm just going to switch over and share with some of my screens.
Okay.
If it'll let me. Up there it goes. Okay. So you should be seeing the map of the corridor here. I just wanted to kind of cover the highlights of what the consulting firm came up with. So what we heard from the people living out there is that they really wanted a place that was easier to walk, and that also had bike facilities and better crosswalks for people to get back and forth between the businesses and homes. And that they wanted to see some more amenities, like landscaping, trees, and things like that. So what is shown on this image here is a long-range plan for the corridor. And the idea would be to drop it from five lanes down to three, right as you come across the intersection of 39th Avenue. And from there, you would pick up a bike lane that would continue south all the way and tie into 37th Avenue. So, right here at, annotate here, another feature they recommended was adding a crosswalk in this area, which would make it easier for people to get back and forth to the manager's shopping complex. And they also suggested blocking off the left turn lane here, which we think probably needs a little bit more discussion with the businesses there and the owners of the shopping complex before it can happen. So as an alternative, if that turns out to not be feasible, once we get to the implementation stage, we would look at doing that crosswalk with a rapid flash beacon instead of a pedestrian refuge island, which is what it would have if we closed off the left turn lane. So then, moving further south on the corridor, we have another crosswalk at 31st Avenue. And then we have a school crosswalk at 32nd here. And this parking lot down here is the parking lot that serves Sacagawea Middle School. And they are kind of in the design phases of figuring out how they're going to orient the new school once they rebuild it. And they're not sure exactly how that's going to impact the circulation and whether use of the parking lot may change. So what is shown here is a concept, and it still needs to be vetted with them once they figure out exactly how the school is going to be positioned. And then at 33rd Avenue, we also have another plan for a crosswalk there. That's the one with the green markings and the three in the middle. 33rd is shown up as a neighborhood greenway on our bike lane. And so we want to emphasize that a little bit and make it so that cyclists feel more comfortable crossing there. And also, 33rd does head down to Sacagawea and is a fairly frequently used route by students as well. So other than that, we have the bike lanes that just continue all the way down the corridor. And just some other suggestions from the consultant were adding additional trees, consolidating driveways, so that we can have more landscaping and more tree coverage, because you can't have the trees too close to the driveways or it impacts your site distance. And it's, let's see, scroll down and show you a couple of the other features here. The report also includes a saving plan. So if you look a little closer at this section, you'll see that it shows you existing conditions, and then it'll show you a way to do short-term improvements, which might be maybe doing a buffered bike lane and not moving the curb lines for the short term. And then, long-term, you could come back and modify the curb lines and do the landscaping improvements. But maybe in the short term, you get that same narrowing effect by using striping and maybe in-street planters or canals or something else to provide that vertical separation. So that's the traffic side in a nutshell. Do you have any questions on this?
Any questions? Any questions from anyone? Not seeing any. We did not have any requested public comment on it. I really appreciate the work Melissa and Inga have done with the neighborhoods, who were very excited about this. Any council commentary? All right, not seeing any. All right, and then we'll go to a roll call on approving this plan, or recognizing this plan. Councilmember Mum. That's an aye. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Again, I know three neighborhood councils will be very happy, so, great work.
Thank you, council members.
Yep. All right, next up.
Ordinance C-35921, relating to the executive and administrative organization of the city, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 3.01A, .210, .225, .245, and .365, and adopting a new section 3.01A, .367, to Chapter 3.01A of the Spokane Municipal Code, deferred from August 3, 2020 agenda.
I don't believe there's anyone from the administration teeing this up. Is there? I don't see. Essentially, this would reorganize the administration as to what departments under what division head somewhat. The mayor did defer it for two weeks so that it could go to community assembly and get comment from there. Mr. Craig O. reported back that, positive comments from them. There's nobody signed up for community comment. Is there any commentary or questions from council members? I'll start.
Council President.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Okay. That passes seven to zero. Which brings us to first reading ordinances.
Amended ordinance C-35819, vacating portions of Alameda Court in the Platte of Crowder's addition, and more particularly described in the amended ordinance as requested by community frameworks. Ordinance C-35924, granting Yellowstone Pipeline Company, a corporation chartered in the state of Delaware, the non-exclusive right, privilege, authority, and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, remove, replace, and repair existing pipeline facilities, together with equipment and aperturances thereto, for the transportation of petroleum products and byproducts in the public right-of-way within and through the city of Spokane, Spokane County, Washington. Ordinance C-35925, amending land use and zoning maps for a 73-acre area within the South University District subarea. Ordinance C-35926 will be considered under hearings item H1B. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right, and then we do have two hearings tonight.
H1A, hearing on vacation of portions of Cleveland Avenue and Nevada Street in the city of Spokane, as requested by Catholic charities. H1B, first reading ordinance, C-35926, vacating portions of Cleveland Avenue and Nevada Street in the city of Spokane, with further action deferred on the first reading ordinance.
Okay. So, if I'm understanding, we're voting on A, but not B?
Right.
Is that correct? There's nobody signed up for public comment, but Eldon, why don't you give us again just a quick overview of the vacation of Cleveland Avenue and Nevada Street?
Yeah, I'm going to see if I can pull up some information here. Let me pull up the map for some reason. There we go. I'll pull up the actual vacation map first. Basically, the applicant wants to vacate Nevada Street from North Foothill Drive, which south end, basically up to Nevada Street again, this is a little area of Wilburton Court over here. Now this came about, city agreed to sell some property, basically this triangular area in order to Catholic charities, for 72, only the formal housing project. It's part of the purchase and sale agreement. And we were kind of contingent on the vacation of Nevada Streets and this piece of Cleveland Avenue from Nevada over to the Grand Dragon Playfields. And also, there's some alley up there, didn't show very well, but there's some vacation up this way, too, that's all part of this vacation. And make the site large enough for that development to work. And like I said, the purchase and sale agreement was contingent upon this vacation. That's what we're here to talk about, was vacation these rights away. We'll swap over here to the site plan. What we do have in Nevada Street, that used to be a 100-foot-wide right-of-way years ago in there. And before they built the fire station, that's the corner of Nevada and North Foothill and that northeast corner. It was 100 feet wide, and there was a 30-foot-wide vacation in Nevada along the east side of that 100 feet. There are a lot of development along that side, the fire station being one of them. But what we have left is a 70-foot envelope in the area of Nevada that we're trying to vacate. With part of that 70 feet, we do have three utility lines in there, a 36-inch water transmission main, 24-inch sewer, and a 6-inch water line. We're requesting that we maintain an easement 15 feet on the outside of the outmost pipes on each side, which means there's an element, you can kind of see there, an envelope, I should say, that's 53 feet wide, that we would like to maintain an easement, to maintain these two water mains and the one sewer line. We also would like to fit any other utilities with Comcast, Devis, and whatever in that same envelope as part of the vacation. We're going to retain easements in there for all those utilities as part of the vacation in Nevada. On Cleveland, okay, what we have going is, it's a 75-foot-wide right-of-way. And on the west side over here, which is basically in that water department parking lot, over there, there's an old transmission main, it's a 36-inch water transmission main built 1927. We did not want anything really encroaching as far as buildings within that 75-foot-wide easement in there. So we asked the applicant to actually, they can put parking lots and things of that nature, but we really didn't want to build any structures in there that might damage that water main. If we actually had a fall in that, then we'd be blowing water all over the place, or the 36-inch transmission main. So anyway, we're trying to maintain a full 75-foot-wide easement in Cleveland, drop it down to 53 in Nevada, for the utilities. We also have, up here on the southeast corner of Cleveland and Nevada, right in this area here, that's a building owned by the school district, we're trying to maintain some public access out of that building. So one of the other conditions we have, in the recommended condition of the vacation, is maintain an easement access in this building out on to Cleveland and then up to the north on Nevada. We see you maintain an access for the people using the school district building, and also the same thing for this alley in here, that we would actually be vacating this little piece in here. We need to maintain a public access, so we don't have to build a turnaround if they're staying by block and lot. Third item for access is down at the fire station, out at the corner of North Foothill and right in here. We want to maintain an easement access for them coming out to North Foothill, or out of their building. So we have three access easements, and those are not going to be retained as part of the vacation. We're going to actually have them establish those easements as soon as the vacation is complete. Because we really don't have anything to retain at this point in time. We're racing our interest to it, so we need to establish those easements separately. We're just going to maintain all the easements in there for utilities, is what we recommend we keep as part of the vacation. That was part of the issue. One of the things that came up in our earlier discussion was losing parking out for the water department. I think they're looking to go to the east over here, on the south side of North Foothill with this intersection. And as we got, we have a Nevada Street pumping station in there over here, and there's another parcel between what the school district's trying to vacate and what the water department's keeping in here, that I think they're going to try to look at re-establishing some parking in there for this parking lot they're going to lose. And we also talked about this building up here on the north end of the parking lot that's being purchased by Catholic charities, and they have no plans to actually use that for a couple of phases of their development. So the water department has some of their engineering staff along with code enforcement in that building. People would like to continue to use that until such time as Catholic charities needs it. So I think they're willing to lease that back as part of the purchase and sale until they might need it somewhere down the line. And there were some of the issues popped up. One other comment that we got was on bicycle access coming down Nevada Street. And here, there was a request by the, I think, Bicycle Advisory Board to maintain a thoroughfare coming down here. The applicant did not like a thoroughfare, and I don't think city staff really thought that was necessary either, because we don't have... in that water department parking lot, over there, there's an old transmission main, it's a 36-inch water transmission main built in 1927. We did not want anything really encroaching as far as buildings within that 75-foot wide easement in there. So, we asked the applicant to actually, where they can put parking lots and things of that nature, that we really didn't want to build any structures in there that might damage that water main. If we like to have a bowl in that, there may be bowl and water all over the place for the 36-inch transmission main. Anyway, we're trying to maintain a full 75-foot wide easement in Cleveland, drop it down to 53 in Nevada, the utilities. We also have, up here on the southeast corner of Cleveland and Nevada, right in this area here, that's a building owned by the school district. We're trying to maintain some public access out of that building. So, one of the other conditions we have, and the recommended condition of the vacation, is maintain an easement access from this building out on to Cleveland and then up to the north on Nevada. You see, maintain an access for the people using the school district building, and also the same thing for this alley in here, that we would actually be vacating this little piece in here. We need to maintain a public access, so we don't have to build a turnaround if this thing by blocking it off. Third item for access is down at the fire station, out at the corner of North Foothill and right in here. We want to maintain an easement access for them coming out to North Foothill, out of their building. So, we have three access easements, and those are not going to be retained as part of the vacation. We're going to actually have them establish those easements as soon as the vacation is complete. Because we really don't have anything to retain at this point in time. We're wasting our interest to it, so we need to establish those easements separately. We're just going to maintain all the easements in there for utilities, is what we recommend we keep as part of the vacation. That was part of the issue. One of the things that came up in our earlier discussion was using parking out for the water department. I think they're looking to go to the east over here, on the south side of North Foothill, with this intersection. And as we got, we have a Nevada Street pumping station in there over here, and there's another parcel between what the school district's trying to vacate, and what the water department's keeping in here. And I think they're going to try to look at re-establishing some parking in there for this parking lot they're going to lose. And we also talked about this building up here on the north end of the parking lot that's been purchased by Catholic charities, and they have no plans to actually use that for a couple of phases of their development. So, the water department has some of their engineering staff along with code enforcement in that building. People would like to continue to use that until such time as Catholic charities needs it. So, I think they're willing to lease that back as part of the purchase and sale until they might need it somewhere down the line. Anyway, some of the issues popped up. One other comment that we got was on bicycle access coming down Nevada Street. And here, there was a request by the, I think, Bicycle Advisory Board to maintain a thoroughfare coming down here. The applicant did not like a thoroughfare, and I don't think city staff really thought that was necessary either, because we don't have any bike routes on Nevada itself. But Catholic charities is providing an actual halfway system to their development, that would allow bicycle access to there, and be open to the public, and so they can actually accommodate that, but not just running down Nevada Street itself. Anyway, there were some of the issues that popped up. I'd be happy to answer any questions, too.
Any questions for Eldon? Not seeing any. Again, there's no comment. This is a very involved project that's going to provide dozens and dozens of affordable units for families. It's a great partnership with Catholic charities and Gonzaga University, with all sorts of wraparound services, and near a new school. So, it's very exciting, but there's a lot of deadlines coming up this fall that we're trying to get a lot of things in place, including these vacations. So, with that, we're going to be voting on whether to approve it, subject to them meeting the conditions outlined by the department. And we'll just do a roll call vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President, is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes seven to zero, and the rest of it's further action deferred. And that is all the business we have this evening. We'll be back in a week, Monday evening. So, I hope everyone has a great night and a great week. We are adjourned.